Second, make sure you say your name, just because I'm Paul as well tonight.
Okay, we got that? Here we go. All right, it's 6:30. We're calling the July 6th Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. And we'll start with roll call. Brooks.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Brian.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
We have a quorum. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
That's one thing to add.
Oh, here we go.
Send it out over email. So, you all have a copy of that. And a couple of you expressed an interest in adding it to the end of the agenda. So, if you would be interested in talking about it, we can.
We'll just enter that as item number 12.
Motion to approve. Does that change the agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four. Uh, move, uh, look for a motion on the consent calendar.
Some will.
Motion is second on the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, the approval of the minutes of the June 15th regular meeting.
It's one typo.
Ooh, it's a good thing you're here.
It's small, but it's a typo. Um, toward the end of the, uh...
Can we get your written problem? So, those are good.
One typo on page eight of the packet, uh, the paragraph that starts, "Janet Clough brought up property on 600 North Pasciello Trail," and that "it was denied." Right now, it says "is was denied," but it should be "it was denied."
Nice catch.
It's maybe just tiny, but, um, other than that, move to approve.
Motion by Alyssa, second by Rob. I'm sorry, I should've been helping you out, Patrick. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, as we make room for public comments, anybody wishing to, uh, address the commission may do so now. Okay, hearing none. Item number seven, rezone application for Track 3 Lee's addition, northeast quarter 2, 101, 48, Split Rock Township, 101-48. How about that? Come on up, sir.
Russell Atkins, 8304 South Timber Oak Circle. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, um, we have 93 acres of a project that we've presented to you previously, Aspen Ridge, uh, that we are requesting, actually, um, was voted on annexation this past Monday, uh, with the city council, and are asking for rezone into the various uses in the project. We've got general business. We have R3 for multifamily. We have an R2 site that would encompass some townhome lots, some single-family lots that are far more, that are used for like villas, patio homes. There's a few, I believe 11, other R2 lots used for duplex lots. The remaining 69 lots would be R1. And then we have just under 14 acres, uh, for a city park, I believe is going institutional. Is that correct?
That sounds correct.
Okay. Um, anyone have any questions? I know that we spoke extensively about this during the preliminary plan process. Anybody else have any further questions? No?
Did we talk about...
Your mic, please. Thank you.
Did we talk about the, the part that's, um, designated for business, whether it be general business would be more appropriate or neighborhood business?
The request we have in is for general business.
Yep. Um, anybody else here to speak on this?
Alicia, just, uh, Alyssa, sorry.
Alyssa.
Um, I kinda had that concern as well, but the fact that it's backing up against, um, the north, the northeast one is backing up against R3, and then the, uh, the west one is backing up against R3 and, and has multiple frontages. I'm not quite as concerned about setbacks as we normally would see, you know, in between, the difference between a general business and a, and a neighborhood business. So, just some commentary on the, on the topic, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say on this?
What is the definition between...
If you could, uh, just come up and give your name and number, name and address for the record, that would be awesome.
That'd be fine. I just have a quick question.
Sure.
My name is Susan Dykes. I live at 2300 East Pebble Beach Lane.
Yep.
Um, what is the definition between neighborhood business and general business?
Um, Patrick could probably do a better job. It, it, it's a basically a different classification of business. There's more things allowed in general business than there is neighborhood business.
Correct, so...
We've reviewed, I mean, we spent six months writing a neighborhood business plan. Um, there is, it's, it's different businesses, it's different setbacks, it's different layouts, it's, it's a different look and feel. It's meant to be more tucked into a neighborhood versus on a, uh, what major collector, if you will.
I mean, as somebody that lives in the neighborhood, I would like to see it more of a neighborhood than, you know, just an open business that anybody could go in there.
Um, we still have limitations on who can go into general business. Um, you can't go in there if you're a heavy industrial or light industrial user, there are a bunch of things that you still have to get a conditional use for. If you're gonna sell beer, if you're gonna have a bar, if you're gonna do any of those things, you still have to get...
Or dispensary.
Yep, you still have to get a conditional use for those things. So, yes.
Yep.
Did I get that?
Yep.
Okay.
And if you're interested in seeing the particular uses or anything, let me know. I have the book if you wanna take a look.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion for the rezone.
I move to rezone according to the plan.
That's Totes.
Second.
Second from Hyderbrink.
And this is, is, is this a recommendation, or this is a recommendation to the city council?
Correct.
That is correct, yes.
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion is second on the rezone. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, annexation requests. So, clear, help me out a little bit, Patrick. Did we actually do this at council already?
Correct. So, this is an item that kinda got carried over the, the agenda, but there's no action that needs to be taken by planning and zoning. It was originally submitted and approved by planning and zoning a couple of meetings ago.
Sure.
And that was annexation contingent on sale.
Yes.
Then the city council approved that.
Yes.
But then the app, the landowner came back and, "We'll just annex," and the city council approved that. So, there is nothing for the annexation for planning and zoning.
So, what are we supposed to do with item number eight, then?
We will just bypass.
We will just jump right...
Unless you wanna discuss it, but there's no, no action to be taken.
We will be done with item number eight, then. Um, item number nine, our discussion items. Thank you. The residential driveway regulations.
So, a meeting or two ago, we had, uh, property owner in the Bluffs came in requesting a, a variance for a second driveway. Currently, residential lots are allowed one driveway.
Sure.
And there seemed to be some discussion on the board that you all would be interested in looking at that topic more in depth, whether it's a second one by conditional use permit, you're fine keeping it the way it is, or some other thing. I just wanted to put it on the agenda so you had an opportunity to talk about it, since several of you expressed an interest in doing so.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts on this? Go ahead, Mike.
I guess, um, my concern would be if we don't have a large enough lot, that we're gonna have all kinds of people that think that they need a second driveway.
Okay.
Um, I would say, you know, there'd be a minimum lot size, and it would, I don't know what the number is, but I would say 15,000, 20,000 square foot lot. It may be longer, larger, I don't know. But my concern would be if, if it, if it's too small of a lot.
Yes.
You're gonna have a lot of people that want a second driveway.
Um, well, I think that we could probably, we could limit these to, say, a corner lot, so it's not along, uh, a normal frontage lot, so we don't have circle drives in the middle of a, a block. We could do, we could allow them on double frontage, because then you would have a driveway on the front and the back. We could also allow them on triple frontages, I suppose. I would like to see a second driveway possibly with a conditional use, instead of just allowing it to be there. I don't know. What do you think, Patrick?
Obviously, no, I can't read what you all were thinking during the meeting, but there seemed to be, I, I took it as you all understood kind of their situation, but the variance rules are very strict for a reason, just because you start handing them out, you're rewriting the code. So, if there is an interest in, I, I agree, probably you want to have some control over them. You wouldn't want, and you wouldn't wanna add a whole bunch of driveways without some real reason to doing so other than I want it. But, in some situations, we do have properties where it does make some sense probably to have a second driveway on the other frontage.
Go ahead, Rob.
I could, I mean, I'm in for favor of it on a corner lot, as long as you would still stay underneath that 40-foot. Full driveway lengths would be like 20-foot each, is what I would say at the property lines.
You're talking width?
With lines, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And you wanna just allow it, or do you wanna do a by conditional use?
That would be for discussion, I guess, though.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Um, I think it makes sense for, um, an additional driveway to, on a, on a lot with multiple frontages, um, to access an accessory structure.
Okay.
Um, I mean, we've had a few instances come in where, I know, like, up in the north part of town, where a gentleman wanted to access his garage from.
The street?
The street.
Yep.
On, on a, on a corner lot. Um, we've got several instances in town where, um, there's an accessory structure in the back that has a driveway off, off, off the back property line. Um, and I, I think I would rather see that than somebody that has a, a drive that goes all the way around their house and, and to the backyard.
Yes.
And I think most neighbors would, would also agree in, in those types, types of situations, just to, just to reduce the amount of concrete in our neighborhoods.
Okay.
But I do agree with the previous comment. Um, we need to be very cautious about allowing two in, you know, on the front yard, per se, uh, as that can, that can cause a lot of, a lot of issues.
Anybody else have any thoughts on this? Do you wanna see Patrick write some language for us? If so, you'd have to give him some direction in terms of whether we should allow them on double frontage lots, maybe, or, or multiple frontage lots, we could word it. Um, if it was along, uh, frontage, it might have to meet a size requirement, but nobody's gonna ever develop a lot that's really that big. I don't think, anyway.
We have a lot of, uh, double frontage lots where the, be the back of the house would be the second front yard, which back up onto Sioux Bol, Sioux Boulevard, Holly Boulevard, Highway 11.
Chestnut, Aspen.
Chestnut, Aspen. And we've traditionally not wanted curb cuts or extra driveways on those roads. And if we would allow such a thing, you know, second driveways on double, double front yards, I think we'd, you know, we'd either have to be really careful about where or what kind we allow, or else, you know, I, oh, for me, I can't, I can't see it. Corner lots, maybe, but double frontage, especially when it backs up onto, say, Sioux Boulevard or something, Redwood, I don't think we wanna make more curb cuts on those roads.
Go ahead, Brian.
Is there anything in our design standards that says where we can't have curb cuts?
I was just working on looking that up quick. We have, um, you know, we have that side distance triangle, so we try to keep driveways out of that area, especially for parking and whatnot. Um, I don't know that there's really anything for curb cuts. We have an access management plan, and so they'd have to stay so far away from that intersection, but that's about all it states.
They do already exist in a lot of places, whether they were allowed or not, or, I don't know. Yes, Barb? Hi.
Hi, Barb Fish, 1401 South Parkview Place. I guess I would have to agree with Alyssa. I mean, how many requests have we actually had come through the variance process to have this change made, and we weren't able to grant it? Are we just fixing a problem that maybe doesn't exist, or a minor problem that exists, not a major problem? I'd be very cautious.
We've had three or four requests that I can remember. I'd, while I haven't, oh, come on.
I'd say probably...
Six, six months ago.
Three in the last year.
Yeah, probably, you're right, three in the last year, year and a half, I would guess. Um, and I don't know, and, and essentially, what this gentleman was, the last one that was here was asking for is, it's basically a, it's a design element, um, on the corner lot. Um, I've seen, I've seen them do this in Sioux Falls quite a bit, neighborhoods and corner lots. Um, it'll just allow us for people to be able to back up and pull out, instead of having to back out into a corner somewhere.
I know a, a lot of the, a lot of the current lots that have multiple accesses are on the streets that we probably don't want them on moving forward.
Yeah.
So, you know, Sioux Boulevard, Aspen Boulevard, um, you know, are, are major and secondary streets, you know, and, and that's for a reason, you know? Those houses back up to those lots because we don't want front yards, and we don't want a lot of curb cuts on them. So, um, as we move forward, um, you know, as, as developers come in, I don't know if we want to encourage that type of development moving forward, so.
So, Tammy, do we define, like, Aspen, Sioux, Holly, Redwood, Chestnut, uh, do we define those as major collectors? How do we define those roads? They're more than just this neighborhood street.
Right, and so, you know, our classification has been a little weird.
Yep.
Because our design standards are based off of the city of Sioux Falls design standards, so their arterial is very different than what our arterial road would be.
Right.
So, we're working through that transportation plan, and we do have a function, a functional, wow, we have a roadmap, and we're trying to come up with different definitions for each one of those. So, I think what we'll call them is community collector.
Okay.
Or an industrial collector, because we have, the street width is different in an industrial park than it would be a residential area. So, we're trying to work through some of those standards.
So, in the language, if we wanted to write an ordinance for this, we could say no driveways on the community collectors?
Yes.
Or greater, I guess, if we ever wanted to define an arterial road, or, which I don't know if we'll ever have one.
Do we have any, any streets where they have double frontage that aren't main streets?
No.
Because I, I kinda think that where we don't want these is double front.
Right, so by defining them, by not allowing them onto the community collectors, we would basically eliminate them from Aspen, Redwood, Holly.
Yeah, or, or even just saying if it's a double, you know, on the double front, you can't have a second driveway.
Yeah.
Because the only, is there a reason why we would have a double front street, other than having...
Um, there's a lot in the Bluffs that's a double frontage lot, because they bought the lot behind them. Um, that would be, why I'd really have to rack my brain to know if there's any more in the city of Brandon or not. That's one of them I can think of. There might be some up above the golf course where they've bought the house behind them, or the lot behind them, essentially making them double frontage lots, and those would be in neighborhood streets. Um, the majority of them, yes, back up to, because they, they laid out neighborhoods so that we would limit the entry points into those places along Aspen and Holly and some of those, but, um, yeah, look at that. Where was that one at?
This is the northeast of golf course.
Okay. Uh, there's one there.
So, that house doesn't have a backyard, then?
Well, no, it, no, it's a double frontage lot, so it's, it's got two front yards.
Right, so can they not put a garden shed or...
So, we, we, they can't put it in the setback, if I remember correctly. Paul would be better to answer that, but we did have to change that, because we didn't allow those in front yards. And when we found out how many double frontage lots we actually had in the city of Brandon, we had to sort of rewrite things.
Okay, okay.
Because there were a lot of them.
Yeah, if...
When we started counting, there's a ton of double frontage lots, which, for the most part, you drive by them, and you just think it's a backyard, until you sit here, and then you figure out that they're a double frontage.
Yeah.
Whoops. So, but we've encouraged that kind of development, because we don't want all the entry points out onto our arterials, so. I mean, there's a handful, probably, of examples of double frontages, um, in the city, not a ton, but where is that one at? Oh, that's on Oak Ridge. Yeah, those are double frontages, too. Oak Ridge over by Hidden Valley. I'm very familiar with one of the houses on that map.
Your mom's though?
Yes. But, yeah, those would all be double frontage lots, too.
I saw it grow up in on Southern Circles, a double frontage.
Yeah.
Backyard blocks up to Hollywood.
Well, and that, Duckman, what's that called?
Tallgrass.
Tallgrass.
Yep.
Those are all double frontage, because the alleys...
Yeah, it's a right of way.
That's, that's not a public way.
Yeah, it's not a public right of way, like a road, yeah, so it's not, it's not quite the same, but, yes. So, there's some examples of, of it, and that aren't necessarily. And some of those, if we pull the map up, probably do have driveways on both frontages, whether they did it with permission or without, I don't know. Okay, so, Patrick, do you wanna write something that we can look at?
Yep, I can write something for the next meeting.
Do we need to put this on hold until the city standards are updated with a definition of which streets qualify?
We could probably coincide it.
Right, how about I just bring the map next time, and then you guys can look over the different classifications and kind of what we're thinking for definitions.
Okay. Yeah?
I think maybe the next step might be people who ask for a circle drive in their front yard. I've always wanted one.
Okay.
So, I don't have to back out, I can just drive up and then drive back out.
You need a bigger lot. Yes, Rob?
Just examples, I mean, this is in Sioux Falls on Canterbury Heights, new development right off 100. There is one, two, three lots with the new houses within the last two years that have two driveway entrances off the corners.
Okay.
Off each corners, and another one in their backyard that's in a cul-de-sac. They are bigger lots, they're, uh, 32,000 square feet, so it's a pretty big lot, but I'm just saying they're, the time is gonna come in Brandon where it's gonna happen, that people are gonna be wanting them, because they're gonna be the higher-end houses and on corner, I'm just saying, for example, and then the ones in a cul-de-sac that has a double frontage, and that's 35,000 square feet, and they looped it around, and it's a, it's off the corner of it, but it's, it's possible, and it does happen around here, so, and new developments.
There could be a lot size requirement if you're in a cul-de-sac where you could pull it off as well. I know there's a cul-de-sac in the Bluffs that has two driveways on it.
Yeah, I, I know there's one, not Parkview, but a block off of Parkview, um, that basically has the same situation that the gentleman came in last meeting for. And then there's also a couple blocks away, there's one where they got an L-shaped garage.
Yep.
That faces two different streets on the corner.
All right, so Patrick, dazzle us with your magic, your wordsmithing.
Let's see what we can come up with.
I guess, in, in my mind, um, I don't know what the rest of you guys think, but I think the second driveway, sorry, um, the second driveway should be, you know, wider than to accommodate a, like a two-stall. I don't think we need two 40-footers. That's just, I don't know, a, a starting point? What do you guys think, from a size standpoint?
Yep. I think it shouldn't, like Rob said earlier, it shouldn't, it shouldn't go greater than what we already allow, essentially.
For cumulative, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can discuss that. You got enough, Patrick?
Yep.
Sweet. We'll move on to item number 10, commercial recreation facility. Okay.
Our city attorney suggested a language, slight language change to further differentiate public versus commercial rec facility, so.
Is this the for-profit?
This is her recommendation.
The for-profit in blue, is that the...
Correct.
Language change?
That's the addition.
Okay. I agree. I mean, this is up for discussion, so we're not voting on it, right?
Correct.
Would you all agree?
It's helped me remember when we did the, the other recreation facility, did we say not for profit in the other one?
We did.
We just didn't say for profit in the commercial one?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. You all good with that?
We will work on getting that for public hearing.
Okay. Item number 11 is the building permits, and since Paul's not here, I can't give him any crap, so we'll move on. Although I did see there's only eight houses in Brandon, there's only like 180 houses in the city of Sioux Falls. That's crazy. Okay, item number 12, discussion about, go ahead, Patrick.
So, mostly Melissa has been talking back and forth with East River Electric, but they looped me in on this conversation as well. They have a substation that is on the corner of Split Rock and Redwood. They currently have barbed wire on their fence. The issue is that is an NRC lot, barbed wire is only allowed in LI and HI, and they want to expand their fence on that lot. And they own at least two other lots in town that I'm aware of, they'll probably want to do something in the future. So, I was just looking for feedback from you all, how you think they should best approach that. Their preferred method that we talked about would be a variance. The problem there is, the concern presented will be public safety. How much tolerance is planning and zoning having to sit up here and potentially turning down a variance if someone's arguing public safety? Probably not the greatest look for you all if their concern's public safety, and you say no. But there's also another avenue we can go. On the comp plan, that lot is envisioned as being institutional, my guess is because it's a substation. We could add that requirement to institutional, they could have barbed wire. Would you wanna do that as conditional use, just because you could have a school? Would you wanna a school with barbed wire around it, or a church, or... Would you want a, a school with barbed wire around it, or a church, or? Presumably, they probably wouldn't make that decision on their own, but it would be possible. Would that be a conditional use aspect? Would you want to allow it just to rezone to LI or HI? There are some concerns about spot zoning, but if you look at the little map on here to the north, that gray area is, I want to say that's heavy industrial. Or HI or LI, one of the two. So it wouldn't be too much of a stretch if that migrated a little bit south. But it would be not technically in compliance with the comp plan, future land use map. So I'm just looking for feedback on how you would like to approach this issue. And whether you think a variance is the correct approach. There would be future ones coming down the line, though.
I would hope we could address it without going the route of a variance. I'd rather do it another way. What is the reason that barbed wire is not allowed in NRC?
When we talked about this, when we wrote the zoning, I, I assume we probably talked about that. I don't remember the specific conversations. It was, for some reason, decided LI, HI, and we did not include it in NRC.
So would one option be to allow barbed wire in NRC?
We do, we'd have to pull up where our NRC is. It's usually newly annexed inland. So usually, we try to rezone land roughly about the same time we do the annexation, like we are looking at with Aspen Ridge. You could have a situation where we annex inland, it's NRC. We wait a little bit and they put up a barbed wire fence, they rezone it as whatever. But it's, it's up to you if there is NRC land in the city, if you would want to open that up to having barbed wire fences, just where it is. I can find the zoning map and we can see where all that is.
It would be good to know how many NRC properties we have, I guess. And, and, yeah. Because if we take in all the city land and turned it into institutional, are we close? To turning all the city land into institutional? No? Is that NRC if it's not institutional?
We are starting the process of turning NRC into institutional, and it'll be on the next agenda. It's gonna be advertised.
How many more parcels does the city have to rezone?
Probably about twenty.
Twenty? And these include our detention areas?
Yes.
Retention areas? The parks we've already done?
Most of them, not quite all of them.
Okay.
So the map behind you is the zoning map, all the green is our NRC lots.
The bright green, or the dark green?
The...
Yeah, the sea green? Oh, I see, oh, dark green, that one.
Yep, the dark green.
Yeah, there we go.
So all of that is our current NRC.
Are those all?
So with a change allowing that in NRC, all those properties could put up.
So that's mostly detention areas?
You have this stretch in there that's probably going to be developed as housing, I'm guessing.
Is that correct, at Risen Sayers NRC?
Uh, if, if the map says it is, it is.
I guess it is. Um, so it's, it's, um... Trying to wrap my head on where all these are at.
So are, the, a lot of those NRCs are city-owned?
Some of them are, and down in here, maybe.
Those NRC lots are all those stuff along Sioux.
Yep.
That, they're in the city limits, am I correct? But they just haven't been rezoned to R1. The corner there is a city retention area.
But they, they haven't annexed yet, right?
They are, they're actually, yes, yep.
So Housit's, the, the blue right here is Housit's proposal when they had their, kind of, their
Yes.
shop and their office.
I didn't realize.
So Housit's is directly down here to the south, in the white. If that helps frame where things are.
And it's McCarty Park, it's, yeah, I would say the majority of that looks like city land. There, I think.
What's that parcel west of Casey's and the, and the storage units?
Yeah, right there, where your cursor is right now.
Is that some city property, or is that, isn't that?
Is that where the?
Yeah, Game Fish and Parks owns that parcel. There's a detention pod right there.
It's a separate parcel from the rest of the state park?
Yep.
And that's why it's in there.
Is that a dog?
No, that would be the canoe launch area.
Yeah. So, I don't know, we put barbed wire in NRC, it's mostly city-owned land anyway, right? We would only be opening it up to ourselves, except for all the people that live along Sioux, I guess, if we...
And it would be open too.
I think there's some properties over there with barbed wire.
On the, on the, uh, on? Okay.
Because as, as those are annexed in, they probably already have barbed wire fences.
I don't know. I would like to let them do their fence, I would like to not do it by variance. If we can figure that out, how about that?
Could we, could we put something in the code that just says unless required, or, sorry, in the ordinance? That says unless required by other codes.
The issue there is based on the language that they provided to us. It is section 2.3.1.3, public safety, in whatever bulletin they're citing, it uses the word recommends instead of requires. So where do you?
Yeah, I, I read through some of that commentary and, you know, I don't, I don't know if I buy their argument. I mean, squirrels, raccoons, they could care less if there's barbed wire there. They're, they're still gonna get through possums, you know? I mean, obviously, horses and dogs aren't gonna get over a seven-foot fence, but I think the animal issue, I, I think that's a mute point. I think people, if they want to get over a barbed wire fence, they can. So.
Okay. So no on the barbed wire? Yes on the taller fence?
I don't, it's okay with me if they put barbed wire there, but I can't see myself voting for a variance.
There we go. There is the rub, I don't think that we would want it to go through a variance hearing.
But what happens when it is another location that's right next to residential? This one, this one just happens to be in a non-residential area, but if they were to put up a substation or something else surrounded in a residential neighborhood, then it's a different story.
What do you think about if they rezone to industrial? Which you could make a case for that in this instance, because they're across the street from industrial anyway.
Is there any reason why they couldn't be an industrial-zoned property? We could rezone it instead of... Is there a reason why a public utility wouldn't want to be in an industrial? I mean, I can't...
It probably makes sense. On our future land use map, we have them as institutional. I think that's, our, our thought there was they were kind, they're, they're a quasi-public thing, power companies. They're not public, but they're not quite the same as a private business.
If they were zoned heavy industrial, would they be allowed to do what they want to do?
Yes. An interesting thing with LI having barbed wire is you have the B&amp;B molding property right there, surrounded by residential. So we do have LI with residential next to it, and if they wanted to, they could put
Sure.
barbed wire surrounding their property.
Where are the other locations that would potentially be impacted by this?
I remember looking at them, but I don't quite remember where they are.
You mean the public utilities that we have? That would be impacted by this?
Something about it wouldn't be just this location, but there'd be some others in the future.
He mentioned they have a couple of other ones in...
I don't know if this would come into play or not, but if, if a utility company bought a piece of land and we zoned it insta, or zoned it industrial, and then they decided not to use it and it's zoned industrial, what kind of problem would that cause? Wouldn't?
Well, yeah.
Then we have an industrial, somewhere we don't want industrial.
How, let me ask you this, Patrick. How often are new substations built? For, for this type of use, I mean?
So they cited wanting to do this because Brandon is growing, so they anticipate expanding their existing substations. Whether they build a new one, I don't know. When I used to work at Seacog off Madison, there was that property that was a little ways down from the fairgrounds. There was plans to have an electrical substation. Every year I worked there, it was always coming in, you know, two thousand, then it would, then, you know, they would, kind of like the, you know, accident, day since an accident, they would change the number. So it became, you know, 2021, then 2022, then eventually, they just like pasted over it entirely. So I don't know what the market is.
Okay.
But they seem to think that they will be expanding. He didn't mention constructing new ones, just expanding their current ones.
And they have room on the land they have to construct the additions that they need?
He seemed to believe so. Their, their issue was just the fence, they want barbed wire and...
And we're trying really hard to not allow other people to take advantage of that if we don't...
Is there a reason why we can't do a conditional use?
Oh, we didn't write it into the ordinance that way.
Could we?
Could we rewrite the ordinance? Sure. Which ones, in your opinion, Patrick, which would be quicker for them? For us to rewrite an ordinance and go through that process, or to rezone the property to heavy industrial?
If we rewrote the ordinance, we would have to, you would probably want to do a, you'd do a rezone, and then you would probably want to have something in there about it being conditional, if we... So if we rezoned it to HI, you would just have the rezone.
Yep.
If we wrote it into institutional and rezone it, and then institutional can have barbed wire by conditional use, you would have two steps instead of the one.
Yes.
So, it's however you...
Even if we rewrote the NRC rules, it would still take those steps, right?
It would take the amendment of the language. And then probably a conditional use.
Correct.
Do you, do you have the ordinance open right now, Patrick? I thought we had something in there about in LI and HI, if it was against residential, that there were stipulations on the fence.
Um, mine. I may have skipped it. So...
Did you find it?
The main section is A here, but... Keeping up the property lines.
There's another one sitting up on corner by Marmon. That's another one where it's located.
Yep, that one we'd have no problem with.
Do we know why they're asking for barbed wire on just one of the ones that they own and not all of the ones?
They're currently looking to expand that one, but they will with their other ones in the future. So it would apply to those eventually. And it's not an immediate thing, they just want to make sure we have things in place when they want to do what they want to do.
And are all of the ones they own so far in NRC?
Um...
I would assume so, yes.
The one over here by Casey's looks like it is already HI. If this is that little HI blip right here.
Yeah, that's right next to the storage units, right?
Yep, so this is already HI.
Oh. I would assume HI because that whole area should be HI.
Yeah, this whole, yeah.
Yeah.
So does it make sense to?
Rezone it to HI, that would be the easiest thing, I would think. That way, we're not rewriting the ordinance, and then we don't have to go and try to balance out the language against everything else. Does that make sense?
So this is their, the current lot, so this is where it sits on the lot. So potentially, it looks like they've cleared this area to expand at some point.
Okay. I would think that if they wanted to rezone it to HI, that that would be the easiest thing. I mean, it's really right across the street from HI anyway.
It is.
So...
It's separated by a tree line from...
R3?
Yep, there are apartments to the rear of it.
And it's got general business next to it.
Yep.
Basically a retention area, but, yes. I would say from our standpoint, it's probably the easiest thing to do would be to rezone it because then we don't have to rewrite anything. Does that make sense? And then they could do what they want to do.
Generally, from a planning perspective, having HI next to any sort of residential is probably
Yep, except for...
Not necessarily the plan you want. LI, we do have some, I'm not sure if we have any HI necessarily next to...
Except for...
I mean, right here.
We have HI across the street from a whole bunch of R1.
We do, right in there.
Like?
So, we do have it.
A whole bunch of R1. So I don't see a problem with this at all.
Okay. I will...
It's not like we're putting in a rendering plan. And I'm pretty sure the people would like to have power in their houses.
Yep.
Yes, okay. Are we good? Anybody else have anything up here? No? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Tote, second by Alyssa. Deely. Deely.
Teely.
Deely. I know. I like the dee.
The D at the end looks like it's silent, it's not silent.
Okay, very good. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:16.